Good evening. Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number 11, held this date on July 10, 2023. This meeting is hereby called to order. Statement of Notice of Publication, Madam Clerk.
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, or remotely via Zoom, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January 6, 2023, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindi?
Here.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Council President Siula?
Here.
Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing from on a silence. And of course, I request that you remember Brian Barrosa in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Please be seated. We will be going into closed session, but that will be at the end of the meeting. There will be no action taken thereafter. There are no proclamations, honor, awards, or presentations. There's nothing for the agenda session. We do have an ordinance, 2023-22, second reading and public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2023-22, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 155 entitled "Fees."
Motion to waive the full reading. Motion has been waived, waived the full reading by Councilman Olivera, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, please come forward if you have any questions, any comments concerning this ordinance, please give your name and address on first call, second call, third call. Motion to close. Motion by Mr. Gindi to close, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance. Move the ordinance. The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Gindi.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kretchinsky. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. We have an ordinance, first reading by title only, ordinance 2023-23. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2023-23, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, authorizing the sale of Block 212, Lot 6.03, to John J. Hergoth Jr. in accordance with the provisions NJSA 40A:12-13B and NJSA 40A:12-13.2.
Mayor, I moved that the council pass ordinance 2023-23 on its first reading by title only, and a clerk be authorized to publish this, excuse me, publish the same as required by law, with a second reading and public hearing to be held on July 31, 2023, at 7:00 PM, by video conference via Zoom, or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Thank you. We will revisit this at our next meeting on July 31. Going on to our reports, as we traditionally do, we begin with our engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So, the 2020 roadway improvements and the 2021 roadway improvements was, which was a combined contract, is done. You have a resolution on your agenda tonight for the final payment. If you pass that, then we can apply for the final reimbursement for the borough and close that out. The 2022 project, the striping, is scheduled to be done tomorrow, and then we'll do a punch list review. If there are any items, we'll let them know, get them fixed, and we can close that out. The 2023 local aid program, we're working on that design. The local, the 2023 local transportation project grant, we submitted the grant application for that. Same with the 2024 local aid program for the DOT, we submitted the grant application for that. The substation maintenance project is finally done. The SCADA system is operational. The training has been done. I'm working with the contractor to do the closeout for that, and then I will give you a proposal for the next year's, or the, this year's maintenance, because with all the work with the SCADA system and all, it's really been two years since that has been done. Water treatment plant upgrades is complete. They're just doing the final punch list items. And the New Jersey DEP Stormwater Assistance Grant application, the borough received $25,000. You get $15,000 upfront. We submitted a proposal to you. It's on your agenda for tonight. I spoke with the CFO and Borough Administrator, and we think you might want to break that up over three years. We don't know if there'll be future funding, but perhaps there will be, which would ease that burden. You have an obligation to do this mapping by December 31 of 2025, as I recall. So, that is my report. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It's East Park. Just happened to be there a couple days ago. The place looks terrible. Basketball court looks hideous. There's water all around it. What is going on with it?
That lies on my shoulders. I went past it, maybe a month ago, and everything looked dry, and the court was good.
Have current pictures showing how bad it is.
I'm not questioning you for a minute. That all falls on my shoulders. I will get that proposal together and over to you for your next meeting, I promise. That's nobody's fault but mine.
At the rate we're going, we're gonna have an ice skating rink.
We don't want that.
No.
So, that, that's all me. I'll take the hit for that.
Anyone else for Bruce? Okay, very good. Mr. Zenga.
Mayor, two resolutions. First one is a Chapter 159 special amount of revenue, which is the $25,000 Stormwater Assistance Grant that Bruce was just talking about. And the second resolution for approval is the shared service agreement with the school for police presence at special events. That's for most of sporting events that the police are at. So, that's just renewing it for another two years. It ended in June 30 of '23.
Okay.
All the same rates again. That's it.
Anything for Mr. Zenga? Okay. How about our fire chief? Any thing to report, Fire Chief?
Hello, everyone. Tomorrow, we're actually going to do the final inspection for the new engine at the factory up in Pennsylvania. So, we'll, hopefully, everything goes well and everything with that. And once that's done and there's no issues, it'll be released to the dealer. So, we're probably looking at a delivery date of sometime the end of the month, the beginning of August for that. I've spoken to Joe about it and everything. So, it'll probably, if everything goes right, it'll be on the next bill list to pay for them. I know it's been a little bit of, a little while, but thank you, everybody, for the help with the fire we had on Herman Street. It was a long night and a long day, but thank you for, you know, age and everything. Mark, thank everybody, please. But other than that, we're status quo right now.
Job well done. Very good, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we know what the final result was, the cause of that fire?
Not at this time. It's still under investigation.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor. Just, our new garbage truck did come in, and our dump truck. We're just waiting for the stickers from Tretton, and the new garbage truck will be on the road shortly. So, ahead of it.
Thank you, Mr. Sures. Any questions for him?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just want to say thank you for mulching the trees on Main Street. You could see they're a lot greener and starting to bloom even, and I feel like we've never seen a flower on them yet, but they do look nice. They're starting to come in. Thank you for that.
Mayor, the only thing I have for this council agenda are two resolutions. On June 30, with the retirement of Sergeant Jennifer Novak, left opening in our rank of sergeant, so you will be appointing or promoting Christopher Flores to the position of sergeant, and also with her retirement, opens a position in the, in our ranks of officer. So, we will be hiring Kyle Jensen, who is already certified. He graduated from the Police Academy early this month, so he's ready to actually work on the road.
Very good. Excellent. Any questions for our chief? No? To our clerk?
Nothing.
Nothing there. Terms of our legal department?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Business Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have two things. I hope you all received my email that the first half of the year led in copper testing. There were no exceedances. Everything meets the qualifications of the NJDEP. And the other thing is on Resolution 232, opposing the American Broadband Act. What that is, in short, is that that act gets passed away, is written, it'll take all our bargaining away when the Comcast contract comes up in a few, in a few years. We will have no, no teeth at all. So, all the community access channels are opposing it and sending letters, and having their town send letters, and that's what I'm asking the council to approve this and send letters to our elected officials and not to pass that bill.
Okay. Anything for our BA? No? Mr. Gindi, your reports?
Municipal Alliance is gonna be held this Thursday, right here at 6 o'clock. Anybody who likes to come, we're gonna be talking most likely about the National Night Out, which is gonna be held on August 1. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
I only have two things, both from the South River. One from the border health. They will be having their blood drive on Thursday, July 27, from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Human Resources Building on 55 Reed Street. And as supplies last, you will get a pair of New York Mets tickets when you give. You can schedule an appointment, and if you have any more questions, you can call 800-933-2566. And the South River Food Bank is running their annual school supplies drive. Dropoff locations are Corpus Christi Church, Holy Trinity Episcopal Church, and the South River Food Bank. They're looking for binders, notebooks, composition, you know, anything that a student can use going into the school year in September, and that deadline for donation is August 16. You can call Selena at 732-688-1584, or Beth at 732-322-8623, if you have any questions. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Siula?
Thank you, Mayor. The only I have is EDC. They've suspended their meetings until September due to people who are gonna be on vacation, and we don't have a quarrel. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
So, Parks and Rec, Summer Rec started today. As of today, we have 280 participants registered, which is great. We're definitely struggling with space, but it's something that's awesome to see. To try to give, alleviate some stress from parents, Terry and Jessica in the, in the rec department, they're now offering gymnastics and tennis after Summer Rec. So, there is an option where you can have your child participate for a fee from 12:15 to about 1:30 in gymnastics or tennis. Cheerleading practice is underway. Right now, we're hosting that at Veterans Park. And for yoga, I'm happy to announce that we have over 40 participants for yoga. So, we're currently trying to figure out a venue in the event that it rains, so please be on the lookout for that. And that's all I have there.
Thank you. Mr. Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. The Office on Aging has two events that are prepaid this month. One will be this Friday. It's for the Ice Cream Social, and I'm not sure if you could still sign up for that particular event. And the other one is a monthly main call is on the 28th. And that you may be able to sign up for. You'd have to call the Human Services Building to find out for sure. The office will be closed this, their office will be closed on the 14th and the 21st. And that's all I really have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The library said goodbye to Luba, one of its oldest employees. She served our community for 49 years at the South River Public Library. It's gonna be sad to see her go, but I was happy to see that since January, we've kind of been celebrating Luba there at the library. And I hope, we hope she enjoys her retirement. The library will also be starting most of their summer programs. You could always stop in there. They will, however, be closing on Saturdays in the summertime due to low turnout. The library is also gonna start again this week, Storytime, at the Garden. If anybody's interested going with their kids down to the community garden, they'll be doing that as well. I attended my Board of Education meeting at the end of June, and I just want to say there was quite a few teachers retiring, a lot of teachers getting their, their government, Governor's Award. It was a good attendance, and it was nice to see all the support that some of the teachers gave the other ones with their retirement, as well as encouragement for their dedication to our town. My next meeting isn't until next, the end of the month, so I don't have much from there. And I do want to mention, besides this, I was in contact with Assemblyman Sterling Stanley. He was able to get us another motor vehicle mobile unit, come down to the South River again this month. That will be held on July 24. It's a Monday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The link will be sent out to be put on the Borough website for this week, in case anybody's interested. They do recommend you mark by appointment only. But in recent times that they also have had this event, towards the end of the day, it does slow down a bit, because everybody wants to come in the morning. So, if you don't get an appointment, I wouldn't freak out, but at least try to just stop by and see if they have some extra time at the end of the day. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Is that okay?
Oh, I'm sorry. That is July 24 at 100 John Street, at the South River Portees Club, outside in the parking lot. And that's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Okay.
And all that information will be on the Borough website this week.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Goodbye to Luba. Actually, they were trying to calculate it. It's, they think it's over 50 years that she has served the library, starting in 1972 or thereabouts. So, you know, 50 years, working there. It's gonna be odd going in without seeing her, but definitely a well-deserved retirement. Also, to remember in your thoughts and prayers, Antonio Toto. He is the father of former Mayor Tommy Toto and our local attorney, Antonio. So, and also Walter Toto, who is also an attorney there. So, ask that you remember him in your thoughts and prayers. I've got a few more things, but that'll be at the end of the meeting. Before we go into closed session, we'll move to public comments. You can come forward. Please give your name and address, and you'll have 10 minutes to ask any questions or make any comments. On first call, second call?
Sean Hauserman, 211 Willett Avenue. Last meeting, you went into closed at the beginning of the meeting, and I guess you made some decisions, and you put additional resolutions on the agenda. Is that true?
I think so.
You're getting a nodding yes.
Yes, I'm getting a yes. Okay, yes.
Voted on them. You don't, you didn't remember voting on them or anything?
I have to think about which ones were they, they, they all sort of blended together.
It used to be if we came out of closed and we're going to add resolutions to the meeting, we would announce it to the public. Is there some reason why you didn't announce it to the public?
I believe it was announced to the public. It was added on.
I don't think you made a public statement. All I remember is that when the clerk read the resolutions for the consent resolution, that there were three additional ones. Anybody remember announcing what the resolutions were about?
I don't have one. You have yours this way?
Can you tell me what the resolutions were about?
No, I don't think we remember it.
You don't remember it?
No.
But you voted on it?
At the time, we, they understood what it was.
Did they?
It was.
Only a month ago. I believe one of them was a settlement that the borough had to make with a former employee. Do you remember that?
If it was there, then we voted on it.
So, do you remember what it was?
The details?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure you're gonna go into them and will tell us.
Okay. Can you tell me the amount that you had to pay?
If anybody can. I don't remember it off the top of my head.
Clerk, remember?
No.
Attorney?
I didn't represent the borough in that litigation.
Would it be $900,000?
He had to pay? No.
No.
Insurance paid?
Yes.
Okay. How much do we pay out of that?
$250,000.
Okay. So, we had to pay $250,000. So, you remember the resolution?
I don't remember the resolution, but I remember the settlement.
Okay. So, where did you get the $250,000 from?
It's in the budget.
Was that why you needed to bring over the $600,000 from the electric utility? Because you didn't, what are you looking at him for?
Oh, that's incredible.
I'm asking you, the BA. I'm asking the mayor. He doesn't know anything. It seems...
The Budget Committee was a long time ago. No, we did not bring over the $600,000 for the 250, $250,000 was under the salary guideline.
So, you had $250,000 for salaries, even though it was a legal settlement?
Well, it may be an operating expense or...
Operating expenses?
Yes.
That's a little different.
Yes.
Okay. So, my question is, a $900,000 settlement, the insurance is gonna pay some of that. That's gonna increase our bill to the JIF on a regular basis then, correct?
No.
Not at all?
No.
We don't know?
We won't know until we get a renewal. Right.
Correct. But they assess based on the costs?
All the cases are put together, and if the JIF doesn't need additional funding for all of their cases, and they break it up to all of their individual members of the JIF.
I'm really surprised that nobody can remember that you had a $900,000 settlement to a former employee, because you lost the court case that he brought. So, my next...
It was settled.
Well, that's a hell of a settlement. The, the other question I have is, in previous meetings, we were talking about trying to reach out to other entities to get money for projects that we need done in town. And you've all said that you've been screaming for money from various organizations, talking to various organizations, talking to our representatives or whatever. Personally, in the last couple of weeks, I've spoken to our state Senator Diagnan, our Assemblymen Sterling Stanley and Rob Karabincheck. Just to let you know, they're not aware of any outreach from South River, from any of you people here, to get any monies. So, I'm just wondering, you know, where the communications gap is. And you don't have to answer it. I don't need the answer to that. And just the other thing I wanted to say was, in, in the tragic accident that was on Whitehead over the weekend, I, Mr. Gindi, you, you had made a comment that it was just a freak accident, but I'm trying to understand why, if it was just a freak accident, the gentleman was being charged with manslaughter.
All right. Well, here's where...
Thank you.
Okay. You don't want me to answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
All right. You want your statement then?
No.
Okay. I will give you my statement and my comments.
Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Siula. All in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Moving on, there are no mayor appointments, consent resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution 2023-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now, therefore, be it is hereby resolved that the below-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2023-218 to 2023-238. 218, authorizing an award of contract to Campbell Supply Company for emergency repair. 219, insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget. 220, authorizing fireworks displayed by South River Recreation on August 11, 2023. 221, resolution authorizing salaries for non-union employees. 222, promotion of Christopher Flores to position of sergeant. 223, authorizing permanent status to police officer to Daniel Alciello. 224, authorizing South River to enter into a shared service agreement with the Board of Education. 225, authorize the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies. 226, authorizing conditional appointment of Kyle Jensen as police officer. 227, approval of a special events permit to St. Mary's Holy Name Society to be held on September 10, 2023. 228, resolution authorizing the offering for sale of borough property. 229, granting renewal to ABC licenses, July 1 of 2023 to June 30 of 2024. 230, authorizing pay estimate number 13 and closeout change order to AC Schultz Incorporated. 231, authorize certain utility refunds. 232, opposing the American Broadband Act of 2023. 233, resolution awarding a contract to CME Associates for professional services. 234, authorizing pay estimate number seven and closeout change order to JAD's Construction. 235, authorizing the Borough Clerk to waive the special event permit fee for the VFW. 236, accept June 12, 2023, regular and executive session minutes. 237, authorize the bills and claims list. 238, Economic Development Commission appointment.
Your pleasure on the resolutions.
Move the resolutions.
Resolution has been moved by Mrs. Ballas, and seconded by Mr. Olivera. Roll call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Kretchinsky?
Yes. So, we should abstain from Resolution Number 227 and 235, though.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes, with the extension of 218, 236, and on 237, 23-01641, and 23-01978.
Okay. There's no new business, so we're down to governing body comments. I started, okay, Councilwoman Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to mention something regarding what Mr. Hauserman stated regarding fundings, and if we've asked our state legislature and senators for funding for the borough. I want to mention that back in March, one of our residents actually spoke with Senator Stanley Sterling. And she, Sterling Stanley, I'm sorry. And she had mentioned to him regarding South River having a need for improvement in fields. Now, this was a Pop Warner parent. I don't know if she was thinking of the future and knowing that further along, Denny Stadium might not be an option for Pop Warner, but she brought that message along to him. And when I reached out to Assemblyman Sterling Stanley, he remembered that. And it was spoken, and he asked what type of proposal we might have. I know back in December, we had gotten a proposal for Vagouge de Gama Field and improvements with the irrigation. However, at that time, I didn't know that you guys were going to put that in the budget. I forwarded it to our Assemblymen, and as you guys know, June 30, Governor Murphy passed the budget, and South River will be receiving $75,000 in funding towards that park improvement. Now, the proposal that I wanted to discuss with you all, since at that time, I wasn't aware that we were gonna put that in our budget, and now it is, and now we're gonna be receiving $75,000 from the state. What can we do with that money that we already put in the budget for us? I wanted to hear your thoughts on finding or using this money on grant writing for South River. We need to start looking for these grants. All I did was ask. I spoke with our Assemblymen and asked, and if we had a proposal put in, and we had something ready to go, and that's what I did, and $75,000 was coming our way. I want to thank Denise Markowski, as she was actually the resident who went up and spoke with our Assemblymen. And it was something that he didn't forget, and that's where this motion came in, so I'm not going to take all the credit for this. On June 14, I also attended a virtual town hall meeting that our Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman does. I wasn't able to do the virtual part of it, but I phoned in. She was taking questions from everyone from her district, whoever had any questions. I was able to get through. I asked for what kind of available... I asked for what kind of available funding can we still look for with our aging water infrastructure and the problems we've been having with water? She was very responsive, the next day, I called into her office, they sent me piles and piles of links and grants and opportunities that are still available. We just haven't been looking for them, they're there. That's why I'm asking with these seventy-five thousand dollars that we now will have available in our budget, if it's possible to look for either a grant writer, either educate one of our employees to start, to take a course to know and learn how to start writing grants, but this is the only way we're going to find money to help us assist in these big projects. So I don't know if I can make a motion or pull the council on whether or not using that money would be done properly, or figure out how we're going to do it for grant writing. Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'm a bit confused. What exactly is the seventy-five thousand dollars for? Because normally, when you get something, if you get a grant, it is for a specific purpose.
Correct.
Now, is it for parks?
I'm saying, okay...
Or is it for grant writing, or is it just here seventy-five thousand?
No, no, I'm saying, I submitted the proposal that we had for the improvement for the field at Daley's Park, okay? The state will be giving us seventy-five thousand dollars specifically for that park improvement. But I'm saying, we have that seventy-five thousand dollars in our budget right now, is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct, but how are you spending the grants? The mayor's right, they usually come with a whole guideline of what needs to be spent, how it gets reimbursed, they're just taking the invoice that you gave them and said, "Here's seventy-five thousand dollars, there's no strings attached."
No, but that is for specifically that project, I'm saying us, in our budget. That grant will be used specifically for that project, correct? If the state is giving us money...
It says park improvements in general, you can decide as a governing body if you want to do other improvements to parks, if it says for Daley's sod replacement, then it should be used for that, but...
I believe it was for the irrigation and the fixing of the field.
The irrigation was seventeen thousand, so that's what I'm saying, there's got to be other, you've got to read the whole entire grant document.
Okay, the proposal that we got for that park and that field in December, I submitted it. Obviously, the amount of it was way more than seventy-five thousand dollars, but they are giving us seventy-five thousand dollars for that project, because we had a proposal ready to go.
So we're essentially freeing up seventy-five thousand dollars?
So we're freeing up seventy-five thousand from our budget.
But we also have the administrative assistant who has looked into a bunch of grants in the last month or two, all water infrastructure grants, and what I can report to you is what she's finding out is everything dovetails back to the Water I Bank. So every grant that they have goes back to the Water I Bank, which we've applied for years ago, and then we get on a list that we're twelve hundred, and then they call us three years later after we do the well project and say, "Do you want funding?" So the problem we have is this water needs now.
Okay, so I have...
Still looking at all these water grants.
I have the, from the direction of Congress, Bonnie Watson-Coleman's office, loads of pages and where and how to do it, and her response to all this was, "If we apply for a grant, and then we have that application in, and submit it back to our Congresswoman, they can also submit, um, to sign it so that she is behind us on such an improvement to facilitate us in getting that grant quicker." That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Like a letter of support for us when we submit our grant.
All right, so I think one thing we're doing is the professionals are now looking at the water system, right, in the section that might be having more brownwater problems? I think once they come up with an outcome, we then apply for that. We have applied, though, through the I Bank and it passed, right Bruce, if I remember correctly, and we're like number twelve hundred on our list, and I literally just got called this year in March and said, "Would you like the well funding?", and I said, "The well's been done. We couldn't wait three years for you to give us the well funding." So if you talk to Bonnie Watson-Coleman, ask her if these things can be pushed up, will we get it within six months and not three years later?
Okay.
Because obviously, if you apply for something now and you get it three years down the road, it's not helping anybody.
So you spoke about our administrative assistant and looking at the one for special projects, correct? Is she knowledgeable of grant writing, is she a grant writer? That's what I'm saying.
She's very knowledgeable, yes, she's looked into a lot of these water grants, too, and a lot of them, almost every one of them comes back to the New Jersey Water Infrastructure Trust Grant or the Water I Bank, almost every one of them goes back there to apply, so...
Okay, because they're still...
And we're going to still apply, but we need somebody, we need some kind of, some application to apply, so some professional has to say, "This is what we believe it costs to fix X amount of cleaning and lining", so something, after the professionals do their job, that's our next step, is to do something like that.
Okay. My concern with the extra seventy-five thousand was to actually implement it on having somebody using that money in grant writing or getting us grants or doing something for that, because we lack in that.
Yeah, but you wouldn't be able to take it out of park improvements and move it to a grant writer, because park improvements is a specific line in Capitol, it says park improvements. So even if you took that grant and put it against that, that line now has seventy-five thousand dollars to the good, but you can't take that and pay a grant writer out of it.
And I have a question. This, do we have to spend the seventy-five thousand dollars first? Because a lot of grants, that's what happens. The town has to spend the money, and then they get reimbursed.
I think we need to see what the description of the grant is, too.
I bet we should be receiving it soon.
But if you're talking to people at the county, we have a 1.5 million dollar grant in for five months now that we're trying to get from them, that we thought we were on the top of the list, and we haven't heard anything recently, so if you have connections at the county, ask them to move our 1.5 million dollar grant to the top of the list, and we'd love to get that next week. So we've applied to the county, and we're waiting for them to respond to the 1.5 that we thought we were...
So I am one council member on here, and we are six, okay?
But you're talking to people there that might have pull, so get them to have more pull.
So I am suggesting, I am suggesting to open up our voices and actually ask for things that we need.
All right, we have, I need, if you know people, I'm not saying this to be rude, I want you to reach out to somebody there and try to get us to the top of the list. We want to get this 1.5 million dollar grant to do turf fields in some of our parks. We thought we were at the top of the list, we went through, we got designs, we did everything, we gave them everything they need, we thought we were at the top, yeah, at the top to almost get the funding, and then lately, when we kind of asked them, they just say, "Well, we're still looking into it."
Okay, because I thought our top priority was clean water, so I was trying to get more grants or looking forward for grants for a different...
Council, the turf field I'll take responsibility for.
Yeah, you did a good job talking to him, too.
Yeah, like, I asked to put that in because unfortunately, we get rained out, and as the rec liaison, I did it, I'm writing grants on my own, you know, trying to get money, so I understand. I've been to county commissioners' meetings, but I will take full responsibility for that because that's something that I asked for, and, you know, thankfully...
And I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I am just simply saying, okay, this is what our Congresswoman told me and how to go about it, and they'll give us the support if we actually do it, so that's what I'm looking for, where our next step is to have somebody to write grants for us.
I agree, I think we definitely need something.
If our admin...
And you can give it to the administrative assistant, she can look into it and start applying for it. If she's saying there's something better than what she's looked at already, she's looked at a bunch of water grants, and I'm telling you, every one of them goes back to the New Jersey Water I Bank, where we're going to sit on a list, if she can get us to the top of the Water I Bank list, that's great, let's not have 1,200 on the list of projects, and some of the towns like Newark are going to get them.
Well, I think that's where this comes in, if we submit an application, and we know it's submitted, and then we ask for support from our Congresswoman for a federal funding, that's where I'm looking at this. This is why I brought it up. I, to be honest, I happened to be on that town hall meeting when she sent a link in mid-June, and I happened to be able to speak out and be able to ask the question, and I got a lot of feedback, a lot of information, so it just brought me to think. We can't do it without having somebody knowledgeable enough to write grants. So that's where I was coming with the question of, with this extra money that we will have, can we use this coming forward to write grants? Or can we only use it for the park? Because we move budget line items around all of the time, so I'm asking you...
In November, you can transfer, but not from a line item that's outside the cap, which park improvements is, so you cannot transfer from there.
Until November.
No, even in November, you can't, things that are outside the cap, you can't transfer and move inside the cap, which we would be doing here, you can't do that, it's illegal to do.
Okay.
So...
So that money, we have to use for park improvements regardless?
But if you can use it for other park improvements, we can do something for a different park right now. That's what I'm saying, I don't know what you applied for, or what you asked them for, or what they said you can get it for.
I asked specifically for the proposal that we got with fixing the field.
But did they say for just that only? Because sometimes it specifies exactly what you can use it for.
So when they submit us our information, since Governor Murphy signed it, when we get that information back, then we'll know further.
Let us, let us know.
Which probably won't be for several weeks, if not months.
Other than that, I, it feels like we haven't been here forever, and then when I checked, it is. We haven't been here in four weeks, because last week was a holiday week. I just want to say, I, school finished at the end of June, everybody was really happy and excited to start rec this, this morning, but unfortunately, it's been a very tough month of July, especially for all the kids out there. Brian Barbosa was 14 years old, he was a friend of my nephew's, a year or two older than my daughter. I think the whole community is hurting this week, and for a long time. I do want to mention that the school district keeps sending out phone calls and emails to remind all parents that they will have support services at the schools, and they extended it until tomorrow as well, from, I believe it was 10:00 AM to 1:00, and then 3:00 to 6:00 PM, for anybody that needs to speak to. They'll have social workers, psychologists, counselors there for these grieving kids. I think it's been very hard, but it goes to show how great of a community we've become. In just a few days, Brian's parents received a GoFundMe of over sixty thousand dollars, over a thousand donations from our residents. There was a fundraiser already in the works for this past Sunday, which was at the South River Portuguese Club, they decided to redirect all of their donations and profits to the Barbosa family as well. You see all these small businesses in town, Causeway Ice Cream, Good Value Bakery, Baker's Square, all donating a lot of their proceeds to the family of this young boy. In reading everybody's comments throughout the few days, I think one of them really marked me the most, and I'll say it, every child is your child, doesn't matter if they're not yours. This was a horrible, horrible thing to happen in the beginning of the summer, but at least all these kids will be able to grieve together and mourn their friends, and hopefully feel like a normal school year in September, so... Other than that, I just want to say for everyone to be safe, I know kids are home, they're excited for rec. Stay hydrated, it's been very hot, and try to enjoy a little bit of this summer with your kids. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kretchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all our public service workers, our police, fire, Robert Wood Johnson, and all of the staff that maintains the town. All I really have to say is, we suffered another tragedy in town and everything, and let's be considerate of one another, and the family, and the friends, and everyone else, and the children. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olivera.
As Councilwoman Mara mentioned, Sunday, you know, we had a fundraiser. Big thank you to the South River Riders, the South River Portuguese Club for coming together. Huge shout out to Terry Chandler for orchestrating and bringing everything together. I think Sunday alone, Julie, if I'm not mistaken, we raised over four thousand dollars for the family.
Yes.
And it's really, you know, a tragedy has brought us as a community together, but it shouldn't take a tragedy to see what we saw on Saturday, we should be doing that more often in any way possible. Brian, I was able to, you know, speak to his parents, he was a bright soul, always had a smile on his face, and it's just a tragedy, everything that happened. You know, he will always be remembered, and I think from what we saw on Saturday, what we saw on Sunday is the impact that he had on the lives of not only kids, but adults. And, you know, his path is to unify and bring everyone together, and I feel like that was accomplished on Saturday as a community. He brought us all together to celebrate his life, which was beautiful to see. So again, I thank you to the South River Riders, the Portuguese Club, the community for coming together and celebrating the life of a child that lost his life over a senseless act. So again, let's keep the family in your prayers, I know there's a service on Wednesday. Hopefully, we can fill that room again and celebrate his life even more than what we've had, and continue to support the parents as much as we can, because they're in a time of need. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Seula?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, I'd like to extend my condolences to the Barbosa family on this loss of their son. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ballas?
As everyone else said, I, most of us did participate in the walk on Saturday, and to see, I want to call it the sea of humanity that South River brought out to support this family was phenomenal. I have seen some of the posts from his friends, that he always had a smile on his face, that he was always giving them good advice, and I hope that his friends continue what he would have done and acted on his behalf to his family. I pray for them, and I hope that they will find some peace and some calm going through the next few days. But remember them always, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gindi?
Thank you. Before I get into Brian Barbosa, the Herman Street Fire, with 27 fire trucks, nine ladders, over 100 firefighters in 12 towns, I think the farthest town was actually Hunterdon County. We had 4 million gallons of water dropped on that fire that night, and out of all that, we had three complaints for brownwater, all in the same section. Speaking to HDPW, nothing has changed since then. I have actually reached out to AGRA, we are kind of narrowing down where the issue is, which they already confirmed that they're going to be following up with the engineer that they hired. So hopefully, we could resolve this faster than, sooner than later. As of for Brian, in the last past three or four days, knowing they hit this close to home, my nephew was best friends with Brian, and with all the people coming out showing unity, I could not help but to see some of the announcements that were said, for example, I'll read it from Causeway. "Here at Causeway Ice Cream, in a small town of South River, we love our regulars. Brian Barbosa, a teenager from South River, was a regular. Brian would always bike here with his friends and order banana milkshake. If we were out of banana, he would get chocolate milkshake instead. Brian was, sorry, yeah, Brian was one of the most nicest customers. Every time Brian came here, he always had a smile on his face. Today, which they extended it to the end of this week on Friday, they will be donating a dollar for each cone or milkshake that's actually being bought to the family. This is just one. But being part of the community, walking the same hallways as Brian did, he did not have a chance to actually live a life. Somehow, I wrote a statement for myself. "In this small town where we stick together and are family, we have collectively felt a huge loss this past weekend. Brian Barbosa was a very, was a teenager with such a bright future ahead of him. My condolences to Brian's, to Brian's family and friends who loved and were loved immensely. As a community, we have come together to support and seek justice for what has been unexcusably done, and we will continue to do just that. Justice will be served. I have always sat up here, meeting after meeting, and told you that the kids are out riding their bicycles, they're out playing, drive slowly. There was absolutely no reason for this to happen. I thank the Police Department for their fast response in finding this person, and I know that justice will be served." That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Question to Mr. Lindenski, we applied for monies for our water meter project?
Yes.
And what happened, who was that applied to?
We applied, there was a grant opened from the state of New Jersey. We applied, and we got a response back that we are not in a distressed area, that we should go to the I Bank for the 2 million dollars, and that we don't qualify for their grant because we're not in a distressed financial area.
Yes. We do apply for grants, and we do ask the state and the county for money. Us getting it, many times, we are awarded it, and as Mr. Zanga said, we're like twelve-hundredth on the list. You know, bigger cities, they get to go first. We're a little town, we take care of our dollars and cents, and because of that, well, you figure you can pay it yourself. That's the response. We do have grant writers, we don't need to have somebody officially called a grant writer. We do have grant writers, several of them in this town, and they do their jobs, they look for grants. I know that our engineer is looking for grants. A lot of them are out there, but for one reason or another, they don't work, we can't seem to get it. Special considerations, that's good. If you got an in, use it. But unless you have that in, nah, we're not going to get it. So, but rest assured, we are looking to get your money back from the state, from the feds, from the county. On a little bit happier note, the South River Day was a success. If you missed it, well, there's next year. At the same day, Reverend Damon Breen's twenty-fifth anniversary, we wish him the very best, many happy years as Corpus Christi's pastor. Reasons to come together in this town, good and bad and sad. Brian Barbosa, it's a tragedy that united this town. People who had no connections whatsoever came up to me, and they're just horrified at what happened, a young life taken so tragically. And once again, this town came together. I thank the people who came and pulled the two vigils and the march together. Not a lot of time, everybody cooperated, from the town, the county, the board of ed. It was all quite moving, it was very moving. The people came out in that heat, and they marched all the way up, they walked all the way up from Whitehead up to Denny Stadium, and it was, it was good, because we could express our feelings as to how we felt about this. So I thank everybody who put that together, and I thank all the people who came out. And please, please, teach your children how to ride a bike, bicycle safety, walking, you know, somebody told me a story up at the school, Crossing Johnson Place, kids are looking at this, never looking, cars coming, trucks coming, and walk right in front of it. You know, teach them as best you can. The rest is going to be up to them, but we have to teach them, and if we are driving, we have to be careful, they're children. They don't always think, sometimes they don't know. So again, to the Barbosa family, our deepest condolences, and to everyone who helped, thank you, thank you again. We are now going to go into closed session, our professionals are released. There will be no action taken afterwards. We have some information that has to be given in closed session. Madam Clerk?
Resolution twenty-twenty-three-two-thirty-nine, whereas Section Eight of Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law of nineteen-seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the general public from a meeting of the governing body under certain circumstances, and whereas the mayor and council of the borough of South River are of the opinion such circumstances presently exist, now therefore being hereby resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of South River and the county of Middlesex, the state of New Jersey, that the public be excluded upon the here and after specific subject matter, and that such subject matter to be so discussed is as follows, litigation, property acquisition. Be it further resolved, that such record of the above discussion be made public when confidentiality is no longer required.
Your pleasure on the motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gundy, seconded by Mr. Olivera, role call?
Councilwoman Ballas, Councilman Gundy, Councilman Kretchinsky, Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Okay, we'll see you on the thirty-first.
Open?
Motion by Mr. Olivera, seconded by Mrs. Ballas, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it. Is there anything else to come before us? I guess not.
Motion to close.
Motioned by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Olivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Against, the ayes have it, we stand adjourned. Thank you.